Official time.
We good? Welcome to our city council meeting. It's Tuesday, September 20th and glad to see chairs being filled. Thank you for coming tonight and thank you to those that are online. Just want to note that Councilman Hathaway is not able to be with us tonight. He had planned vacation. And so did Councilman Lynn Meacham. However, he is online and participating in this meeting. He will be voting on anything that's needed to be voted on and just as though he were here. The others, Councilmember Sitaway, Councilmember Adcock and Councilmember Montoya are present and I just want to welcome you all. Thanks for being here. I want to start this meeting by asking if there's someone that would like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Art.
Mayor, can you check your microphone, make sure it's on?
Little green light says it's on.
Okay, alright.
Don't know what else to do there. I would like to ask if there is someone that would like to offer an invocation or a spiritual thought for our meeting tonight. Seeing that none has taken, I would like to do that. Our Father in heaven, humbly we bow our heads before thee with the great blessings that we have in our lives at this time. We're grateful that we can meet here in this meeting. We pray for thy spirit to be here and we pray that thou will bless us as we discuss the needs and the desires of the citizens, the many things that go on and to be able to honor so many good people that serve our city. We're grateful for a chance for us as a council to represent the city, the citizens therein and to do our best as we make decisions. We pray that we can do so. We pray for thy blessings upon those that serve in the police force and in the fire department and even those in the public works that do so many good things that help us as we live in our day-to-day lives. We pray now for each other and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Do we have any conflicts or potential conflicts, anything like that we need to bring up?
No.
Good. Consent agenda. We have the city bills and there's also a declaration of surplus property. Would like to know if there are any questions or any discussions that you would like to bring up on that matter? We good? We answered many of those things as we went through the work meeting an hour and a half ago. Any other issues that need to be brought up with that? Then I would ask if we could have a motion to pass the consent agenda and move on?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Montoya, a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Sitaway. All of these votes have to be done by roll call, so Councilmember Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes, so we'll move on to the public forum and I need to know, the first item on the agenda is Pace and Sanantquin area chamber. Did we hear anything from?
Yes. Sorry, I'm gathering some new information.
Okay, good. I don't want to mess you.
I didn't get it, so. Hello, I'm Jim Rowland and I'm the treasurer on the executive board of the Pace and Sanantquin area Chamber of Commerce. Glad to be here. We have made a executive decision to slow down our business of the month program and turn it into the business of the quarter program. We have found that similar businesses kept winning every two years and we wanted to get it to be a little bit more meaningful and impactful to those winners. So each month, we're going to work on highlighting an employee at a particular business and then highlight that business and try to promote the local businesses through a monthly program, you know, where we maybe recognize a particular employee or a particular business and just give them some Facebook press or get in some newsletters and things like that so they can get some recognition. And then every quarter, we hope to maybe pull from that group a business of the quarter and promote them that way. Any questions on that? Any thoughts on that, ideas?
Sounds good.
The hometown market has been a lot of fun for us this year. We've had, you know, mostly well-attended nights. The music's been, I think it's been great every time I've been there, so I've really enjoyed it. We had some great chili eaters last night. We appreciate you.
I'm still suffering, yeah.
I know the feeling. I snacked on quite a bit myself.
Yeah, but did you try every one of them?
I did not.
Yeah.
No, that's why I was not.
Yes, we did.
No, we did.
Yeah.
There should be hazard duty pay.
Well, we really appreciate you participating and the crowds were great. I mean, we had more people at our booth last night than we've had the whole year combined.
We, we just want to suggest that next time you go to a real small cup, you know, having that great big bowl all the way around.
Yeah, we did learn a few tricks though.
But it was all good.
And hopefully you'll come participate and do it again next year.
Sure.
Alright. So I was, I was just asking Stephanie what we're gonna do next week and she said we were gonna try to do kind of a fall festival pumpkins and stuff, but she said there are no pumpkins available, but on my way here from Pace and I just passed a booth with a whole row pumpkin, so I'll get back to her on that and, and maybe we'll have a little fall festival type atmosphere. I wanted to just, I'm not sure what kind of reports you've gotten on Orchard Days, the pancake breakfasts. We did pancake breakfast and we sold ice cream. The ice cream sales were, were not real good. We tried it at Onion Days as well in a hundred-degree heat and sunshine and it still wasn't very good. So I don't think we'll be selling ice cream again next year. But the pancakes, is there any input on the pancake breakfasts? There was once, some talk about maybe moving it to the Saturday before.
I think it's too, too much for that Saturday.
You think it's too much?
Originally I thought with the parade would be good because people could go eat and then sit at their seats of the parade, but I don't think enough people knew about it.
Right.
If you set up right in front of the Buckaroo rodeo next year, you've got hundreds of people coming through. I'm sure they'd love to have a pancake.
At what time does that go on?
Seven?
Seven or eight o'clock.
That first Saturday, we have a flag raising out there at the, at the rodeo grounds and then you set up.
Yeah.
I think that'd be a better way to go about it.
Our concern was there wasn't going to be enough people.
There'd be lots of people.
It was extremely well attended in fourteen hours of rodeo.
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, and lots of children.
Yeah.
Who I'm sure love pancakes.
If we announce pancakes beforehand, I'm, people will.
Especially if you put chocolate chips in the pancakes.
I'll make a note of that.
Another recommendation.
Alright, well, we will discuss that and see. And, and my biggest problem with all of our chamber events is how do you communicate to the people? Do you, do you guys have a solution for that? I just don't think Facebook's the way. And I don't, do your newsletter, do you have a newsletter that goes out in the utility bill?
Yes.
Is there a spot in there for the chamber to have a consistent presence?
Norm could talk.
Mayor, it's your newsletter. How, how would you like to have that?
You take, I'll take my space and I wouldn't have to write somebody. Nobody reads it.
That's exactly what I was thinking. I don't make the.
So, um, so may, if Brenda thinks there's space, she could talk to mayor.
Yeah, if, if, it's up to the mayor if he wants to yield space there. There, just so you're aware, we require whatever's gonna go into it on the fifteenth of the month before.
Yeah.
And that, that way we have time to edit it and get it placed and put it in where it needs to go and where we have room, et cetera. There are months that we don't have a lot of room, like October's already full. I'm, I'm reviewing it downstairs right now and it is full.
Okay.
We have, we have two months out of the year that we have to post budget, required budget
Right.
stuff in there, which is June or July or July and August. I don't remember which ones, June and July, I think. And then, so even, even those months, we don't put as much in there, but again, it's up to you, Mayor, how you'd like to have, to direct that. It's your newsletter, so.
You know, anything that helps or stimulates the business, that educates our community on what businesses are there and what we can do to utilize them more. You know, I'm all behind, so, yeah. I'd easily give up half of my space.
Okay. Well, we can negotiate that. Who do we, who do we speak with?
You can just send it to me.
To you, okay.
Yep, just send it to me and we'll see what we can come up with. Again, recognizing that there may be times where we have to pare it down or
Sure.
whatever, but again, it's.
Okay.
I think Paige is gonna jump out of her seat because she's got stuff.
So we advertise, I'm Paige. I'm over the Buckaroo rodeo.
Okay.
So we advertise very highly for our Buckaroo rodeo.
Yep.
So we could add that to all our advertising also that there will be a pancake breakfast out at the arena.
Beautiful.
You'll get lots of people.
Yeah, okay.
If it's noted as part of the Chamber of Commerce as, as help to the city, I think, and the rodeo, I think it'd be a great thing.
Great.
She's the right one to say that, too.
Okay.
So Jim, you'll also want to coordinate with the rec department so as we go out, put our flyer out for, for Orchard Days that it's in there as well.
Yeah, we'll definitely stay, stay close contact and get you all the information.
Yep.
Okay. Fantastic. The other thing that we want to really kick off and, and I need some help on is the, we want to have a, another monthly networking event. Right now, we have every second Tuesday Breakfast Club up at Orchard Hills Bible Church and, and that's pretty well-attended, but there's a lot of people say, well, we can't get there at eight o'clock in the morning. So we also feel a lot of negative feedback when we try to do something at five or six in the afternoon. So we're gonna try a noon event and see if we can get businesses to at least pop in for an hour lunch. We need locations. I come from Florida. Florida has got every type of restaurant, hotel, lobby. It just, you know, there, you never ran out of a place to go meet. I'm struggling finding that place here. Do you have some recommendations in Sanantquin where we could maybe have some conversation to meet? Well, food, with food or without food, right? We could, everybody could bring a brown bag, you know, lunch if they need to.
I don't really. I think in the future, we will be able to find some, some places to help you because there are some things changing. I, I go to many businesses a month outside of Sanantquin trying to sell them on Sanantquin so that we would have those kind of facilities and that. We're having some success, but it's slow.
Yeah.
So keep in tune with us. We'll see what we can find. We may be able to come up with some other things, but now that it's known that you need that and we could have it here.
Yeah.
We may be able to find some new opportunity and really want to look at that.
Yeah, just keep it on your radar and, and let, you know, let us know at the chamber if, if, if you have any suggestions, we'll contact them and reach them and see if we can do that.
That's a once a month.
Yeah, it would be on the fourth Tuesday. So we're gonna do all of our chamber events, try to keep them all on Tuesdays. So it's a bit easier to calendar and remember and get consistent with. So we're gonna shoot for the fourth Tuesday of every month, either here or in Pace and, so we'd, we'd love to have as many here as we do there, so.
In about seven or eight months, you might be able to commu, communicate with the community services department as well. We'll have a new building that might have some
Okay.
programming space available.
I was thinking about that, too.
Beautiful.
We will have McDonald's soon, too.
Yes. Alright, and that's my report. We appreciate it very much and appreciate all your support for the chamber and anything else we can do for the city to help promote the city through the chamber?
Yeah, anything you can will help, but thank you.
We will do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shawna Jo.
Alright.
I'm gonna give you the podium.
Okay. I'm gonna have Ms. Paige Steele come stand next to me. I have to first say, this is one of the first people I met when I moved here to Sanantquin and it has been a joy to know her, so I just have to say that. Can you hear me okay? Am I coming crust? We're excited to honor Paige Steele. Paige has volunteered for the past seventeen plus, I think it's eighteen plus now, years with our Orchard Days rodeo, rodeo queen contest and the Little Buckaroo rodeo. She has start, she started as a ticket collector for the rodeo in her first year and is now heading up the committee, which plans and coordinates the two rodeo, the Little Buckaroo and the rodeo and the queens contest. She has been at the head of these committees for the past six years. As many know, our Orchard Days rodeo has been awarded the prestigious RMPRA for eight years straight now. We just received it again, but we received it for eight years straight and we recently received the rodeo of the year again in 2021. It is through the dedicated hard work and leadership of Paige with a lot of help from the roping club that our rodeo is so spectacular and known throughout the region. Paige and her husband Jeff have lived in Sanantquin for the past thirty-nine years and raised four children here. They now have ten grandchildren. So it's still ten? Okay. She works full-time as a home health hospice nurse in her free time. If there is any, she spends time watching her children's, children's grand and grandchildren sporting events and attends other rodeo. She cares for eight, there are eight horses, enjoys boating and frequents Disneyland, so I need to get on the fam, friends and family list. Thank you, Paige, for your outstanding and longstanding volunteerism on behalf of Sanantquin City and of Orchard Days. Your contribution has been phenomenal and very much appreciated. I wanted to also say that because of all of her efforts, we have recently, she has the plaque, I believe. Do you have it? That one? She has. She recently was nominated in 2021 as volunteer of the month for Sanantquin City and she also was selected by the Central Utah Recreation and Parks Volunteer Award, which is right here. She brought it with her tonight. And that we have a special awards banquet for all the people that live in the central Utah area for volunteers, so that was kind of fun. And we also recently received, like we said, the 2021 plaque for the rodeo in 2021, so. I just want to say we love you, Paige, and we appreciate all you do to help Sanantquin be a great place to recreate. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wait a minute, she's gotta say something.
Oh, yes, come on.
Well, I enjoy doing this, or I wouldn't do it, because I don't have a lot of spare time, but I couldn't do it without, like they say, the roping club and my family, every one of them help. So, but I love it. People think I'm stupid, but I love it and I'm gonna keep doing it till I can't do it no more. So thank you for letting me do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need both plaques.
I'm gonna give just to the, you guys, we have a box with all the others. We've got. We have a little bit.
Okay.
Do you want to hold all these? Do you want to try to have all ones?
Shawna Jo, do you want to get?
Are you trying to get Jeff to come up?
You wouldn't come up?
I just wondered where my award is. It's coming.
It's me.
You're married to her.
That's right.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's really great. She is a good woman. The good thing about it, Jeff, is you'll always marry up and you did well.
She did, she did well.
Okay, we're gonna move to the public forum and first on the list, and we have a couple, is Ms. Sanantquin Molly Mortenson. So Molly, if you would like to take the podium? And you guys always come in three. I like this.
And not matching.
We didn't plan to really wear rompers, but that was awesome. Okay, so our reign is almost over. October first is the pageant where we crown the new Ms. Sanantquin. So write that down, October first, and I have twelve tickets for you guys. So, awesome. I wanted to just announce some of the things that I've accomplished this year serving our community. So first, I welcomed elementary kids to their first day of school last year and this year, since I had, I was lucky enough to serve a little bit longer than a year. I visited residents at Seasons of Sanantquin. We socialized at the Roly's Red Barn Pumpkin Patch, volunteered at Senior Citizen Thanksgiving Lunch, choreographed and performed during holidays, judged the STEM projects at Apple Valley, went to the school carnival, judged and performed at Mr. Pace and welcomed elementary, oh, I already said that one. So yes, that's some of the things that I had to do monthly, well, I got to do monthly. So I had to do two hours of service for nine months consecutively. And then the other part of my reign involved serving the community towards my platform, which is find confidence, make the world your stage. So it's all based on confidence. And I have to do fifty hours towards that. So these are more bigger projects that I did and this consisted of teaching wine dancing to a couple different wards here in our town. I held the adult prom, which I'm sure some of you came to or heard about. I taught a love yourself lesson for Valentine's Day to some young women. I helped with the Sounds of Sanantquin, which was so beautiful. I think that turned out so well and I'm just, that was awesome. So thanks for holding that for our town, because that really is so amazing. I love going to that. And then just barely, I held a service project for the alumni, Ms. Sanantquin royalties and we got together and made some blankets and then we donated them to the Food and Care Coalition in Provo. So that was amazing. And so just to say, this, after this whole year, we have served over eighty hours dedicating all of our service to this community and that's not including our nine parades or the whole week of Orchard Days or city events, which includes the Easter egg hunt, the nine eleven slash Memorial Day breakfast, the spooky night Halloween walk, things like that, not included in the hours. So I'm gonna turn the time over to these guys.
My name's Jade. I'm Molly's first attendant this year. This is actually my second year serving in the Sanantquin royalty and so I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to Molly, to everyone that works for the city and especially to the council members and the mayor. I've had a great time running and I have felt all the support that you guys have for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Karen Rowley. I'm the second attendant and I also just wanted to thank you as a council. I don't feel like I worked with you a lot since I was behind the scenes, but every time I've worked with you, I felt very like respected and welcome and I love, I've loved being in a, an attendant for Ms. Sanantquin. I feel like we're friends, we're besties. And I just have had a really good experience this year, so thank you.
You know what I enjoyed? I enjoyed being with you guys when I got to go to STEM and when I got to cook breakfast with the firemen and
So fun.
You guys have done a tremendous job. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. And I just want to quickly say thank you guys so much. I, oh no, Betsy's already heard me cry. She helped with our interviews last week and I just bawled my eyes out, but our community is so special and sorry, I can't talk when I cry. I did this pageant for scholarship money for school and I would gladly say that I would do it all over again and not have my school paid for. I'll pay for all of it. And I hope I made a difference in our community because our community has made a difference in me, for sure. So thank you all and I'm so grateful for everything you guys do for our community. It's amazing what you guys do, so thanks. And come watch us on October first.
Thank you.
Just hand them to the mayor. We'll help get them where they need to go. He might take all twelve of them, but.
I may do. Thank you. You guys do a tremendous job. The next one on our public forum is Dale Rowley. You gotta have a crown to be able to talk here.
Dale Rowley, representing Cherry Hill Farms. First off, I think Jeff's lived in town longer than thirty-nine years.
That's a little beyond how I've been married.
Yeah, that's what I figured. He's just been here over fifty years, maybe even longer. I got a couple of things I wouldn't mind bringing up. First, I'd like to thank the city council and the city staff for advertising our emergency preparedness fair that we're having this coming Saturday and taking space in the coveted newsletter to be able to do that for us. We appreciate that advertisement and also the willingness of Chris Lindquist and being able to be there and, and help us with things from the city and be a part of that with that emergency preparedness fair we're having this Saturday at nine o'clock. And appreciate all that advertisements you've given us. Second part is, I visited with Norm, city manager, earlier today about city code on developments where there's multi-dwelling, I don't know what you call them, apartment units that are going up against orchards that we have in town. And he did some research for me and came out and said that the city code requires a certain type of fencing to go between the landowner and the new developments and I appreciate that for getting that in the city code. There are some, there is a, a little addition to that that I'd like to bring up and that's, we have, we're not butting up against on a fence line. It's butting up against across the street and the city code, according to Norm, can't force someone to do something on somebody else's property. And I appreciate that, people looking out for others. But when you put a multi-dwelling house of over a hundred units across the street from an existing orchard or horticulture area and there's not some type of barrier there that keeps the kids out, that potentially could be there, it puts a, a, a financial burden on that that horticulture owner of going and putting in a fence. And I guess I'm just suggesting that as you look at city codes, I heard you're redoing the city codes on Main Street. Maybe look at the city codes of, of multi-dwelling housing going in across the street where there is no fence is gonna be put in because they're facing the streets of maybe some type of monetary allowance for that property owner to be able to afford putting a structure in to keep the incoming people from wanting to walk through their orchards or thinking it's their backyard and they can do with it what they want, because there's plenty of people in town that think that of the orchards in town, so. I guess that's my plea tonight is as you look at your city codes, look at the challenge that the orchard people do have when they come across the street and there's no barrier put in that there's any help from that new development that's coming in. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. You know, there is an agreement with the developer that he is supposed to be understanding that he is building in an agricultural zone. What kind of teeth does that development agreement have that, that notes that? Because I know we've talked about this multiple times and I need to see the face of the attorney when I ask questions like that.
So the, the, the property that I believe Dale is referring to is across the street or behind Macy's and across the street from his orchard there on two hundred north. That's the, I believe that's the specific area that you're referring. I believe that's the specific area that you're referring to. We do have a development agreement there, but there's nothing that I'm aware of in the development agreement that requires this. There is, there is state code that actually requires that there is a statement put on a plat when a subdivision similar to this is, is being put in, that they're within a certain distance to agricultural area or an agricultural protection air, protected area. And so there is that that is required on the plat, but there's no, that I'm aware of, there's no infrastructure requirements, fencing requirements, monetary renumeration as, as Dale is, is referring to in this particular case in that development agreement. That, that's not necessarily addressed.
Well, there is one, there is one development that is adjacent to that property on the west that goes down.
And they have, they have put in a, they have put in a masonry fence, that's correct. I think that Dale's concern is the, the fact that this other one will be across the street from it, and a, a front of a property along that typically doesn't have, or you can't even put masonry fence there because you've got site triangles and other things where you have driveways coming in and out of it, where you just can't do fencing like that. The, the code reads that, that it is a perimeter fence, and typically the frontage along a road is not fenced because of those types of reasons.
Well, having grown up in that neighborhood at one point, and I'm still growing up, I know what it's like to even have a little orchard, and people move in, and, and they like the blossoms, and they like the trees, and they don't understand the, the spring that has to take place, or nowadays, the fans to protect the frost from taking the, the crop away. You know, there are noises that happen way into the night when you're irrigating, when you're harvesting your fruit, gosh, when you're doing about anything. And I really wish, and I don't know if you can legally do this, but we wanna be agro-friendly in this. Gosh, we just went through this agrotourism thing to my eyeballs, and, and yet we don't have a way to protect some of that area where I saw my own father suffer through what can happen with people that move in and have no clue of what's going on, and the next thing they've got is a lawyer. And, you know, we, we need to be prepared. We need to be able to take this and understand it on, on every side. So I don't know what the, and, and to the council, I don't know what we put into this, but I've seen it firsthand, and I know what you're talking about, Dale. We grew up here. So I think that's, that's good information, and it's maybe something that we need to consider very highly. I, I worry about this. And I'll shut up at that point. Thanks, Dale. Appreciate it. Anything else?
No, I just appreciate you looking at that. There's, there's a lot of orchards. Some of them might turn into developments across the street from each other, fence lines, whatever, but it should be nice to look at that in your future codes. Probably nothing could happen with this existing one that's already been passed, but in your future developments coming in, it'd be nice to look at some of that.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have anybody else on the public forum. Is there anything that we need to bring up? Because I'll move on immediately. Thank you. Jason, are you still with us? Paige, are you leaving?
I'm leaving. Sorry.
Thank you. You can't sneak away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
Jason, do you have new businesses and any other information you wanna give with it?
I do. I, I work with our staff to get that ready for today. I'll probably have Norm report on it, since he's there in the room and, and can convey the, the information to you better.
Sure. So mayor and council, I have the building permit report up in front of you. We've gone up a little bit since the last time we talked, a couple of weeks ago. I think we got, we're up about fifteen permits from where we were at before, so a little bit of movement there. Happy to answer any questions that you've got, but you can, you can see where we're at compared to the same time last year, as well as the overall from last year and the several years before that for nineteen, or for twenty and nineteen. New businesses, there, it looks like there's three of them. They're all home occupations, and that information is there. Happy to answer any questions that I know nothing about for you on that. But those have come through the process and, and have, have been approved accordingly.
Okay. Any questions? Anything else we need? Good. Let's move on. Resolution on the Utah County CDBG Agreement Amendment Two. You may be asking yourself why there's an amendment two, and the county surprised us with that. That was then reviewed. I think we're still in good standing. Everything was approved, and you guys went through it last time as well. And it had to be signed again this week, so we took care of that. Anything else did I miss?
So this is the, the CDBG agreement that was done a, a couple of months ago, I want to say within the last two months, was, was amendment number one. This is amendment number two, that just has to do with some wording that the federal side came in through MAG and the county to, to update this wording. Again, it's only a couple of paragraphs, and staff and, and the city attorney have reviewed that and are recommending that you approve that tonight.
So I would open it up that, or look for a motion for resolution oh nine oh four, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
I'll second it. Been seconded by Councilman Adcock. Voting, are you on, Lynn? Councilman Meacham?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay. Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
That passes. We'll go on to the remnant property parcel. Would you like to go over that and maybe make an explanation in case anybody's got a question? Most of the city, the council, we've gone through this a few times, looked at where it is, and it's a good move.
Yeah. So council members, as we talked about in the work session, this is about a six hundred square foot piece of property that the city received a few years ago, many years ago, with a, a potential road that now is not going to be there. It's just north of the Apple Valley Elementary lawn there on the north end of the school property. And we're recommending with the, that you approve an agreement to sell this property to the adjacent developer who also happens to be here tonight. One of their representatives happens to be here. Do you have any questions on that? If not, we would just recommend an approval of the resolution, that the mayor can sign that agreement, and we can go ahead and transact that, that property purchase as outlined in the agreement.
Are there any questions, or do you have any questions for that piece of property? And it's really landlocked to what we would be even able to use at this point. This is just a matter of getting a piece of property that's not stuck in the middle of a subdivision.
So we can't put a park there?
On six hundred feet through people's backyards, I think probably that'd be a little tough sale.
I think this is.
West Kennedy Pool.
Pool only. No parking, no access.
I would like to ask for a, a.
Can you go back to the heading, please? Is there a typo? Why's the O two at the end?
Uh, there is a typo. I apologize for that. You did catch me on that one, and I certainly apologize for that. It is a.
No, it's the resolution.
Yeah, it's a number oh nine oh five, twenty twenty-two dash oh two.
Yeah, it should be just oh nine oh five, twenty twenty-two, and we can get rid of that, get rid of that to oh two at the end. Apologize for that. Thank you for catching it.
Then I would entertain a motion to move forward.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Sitaway, second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Adcock. Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
It's good to hear you wherever you are. It's just good to hear your voice. Okay.
You'd know where I was if I turned on my camera.
You're fine.
Better off, we'll be jealous.
Leave it off.
We'll be jealous.
We wanna move on to the ordinances on the Erkenbrack property. This is a rezone, and this is something that we've been working on with Mr. Erkenbrack for some time to get this to a point where it would be very beneficial in the commercial zone. And there's a lot of information that goes with this. I could go on and probably bore people, but would you like to hit the statistics and at least pull, pull up that drawing so we know?
Sure. So I think Jason Bond has done a good job in his memo allocating or indicating which zones would be changed. There's about five acres or so that will be, that would be adjusted through this zone change. You can kinda see the two areas here, mostly in, in pink or the RC zone in the upper map, which is existing to a little bit different configuration in the RC zone, and then CLM along the bottom there, matching up with Highway Six and, and opening up a little bit more exclusively CLM or commercial light manufacturing, rather than having the potential for MSC, which would be allowing for multifamily on, on the upper floors of that, along that. So this is a rezone. Again, there's two parts to this tonight. We'll be considering a rezone first, and that is what's before you.
Yeah. The one thing I really wanna point out is through the negotiations, and this was put forth in the last city council, it was kicked underway right at the first of when we came in, and we're now at the point that we have over four acres of good commercial that has been put into this with some very good engineering, good thought. And so I would like to just ask, are there any questions? Are there any matters that you wanna bring up? Are there any issues that you feel that we haven't touched on?
I think the developers did well taking our feedback and putting that into action, and it looks good.
Councilman Sitaway, thanks, Betsy. Councilman Sitaway, did you attend the P and Z when that was presented?
I did. They had a really good discussion on it, trying to figure, and they all seemed to hesitate a little bit on approving it, because they weren't a hundred percent certain right away. But it seemed like, obviously, they were convinced. They got a unanimous approval to go forward. Some things that weren't brought up, as I know, this specific property is kind of a sore spot for a lot of people in town. It shouldn't be. It's not their property or anything like that, but, you know, three, four years ago, we had Mr. Erkenbrack tell the entire town he didn't want townhomes in his property. He came to the city for a rezone and that, did a few other things, and then it sat there as RC until last November, when they, we got the RC, MSC, CLM, and, I mean, just sitting there and telling us, we don't want, I don't want townhomes on my property, and then facilitating townhomes and apartments with the MSC on the property, kind of is the sore part for a lot of people in town, but it's his property. He has a right to do what he wants with it. He sold it to the developers now, and I think what they've done here is far better than leaving it all as residential commercial. That could have all been townhomes, condos, apartments, whatever they wanted. Getting, and even the MSC, that isn't required to have commercial, right? Even Main Street commercial?
It actually is.
It is. Okay.
The bottom floor.
So bottom floor commercial, but then apartments on top.
Yeah.
So the, the CLM is more focused on what that area should be. I mean, in an ideal world, that would be C1, CLM, and industrial, in my opinion, but we don't have a perfect world. We have what we have, and this is, the change, I think, is a step in the right direction and definitely gonna be helpful.
I, I think the input that's been given, the reviews that we've taken have been very thought provoking.
Oh, it has.
And, and we have worked hand in hand, I think, with the developers and Mr. Erkenbrack to bring this about. I think our vision of, as a city council, is a little different than the past. We're trying to envision Santaquin and build it that way.
Yeah. And I like the CLM. I mean, we created CLM for this, didn't we, last November?
Yes, correct.
It, the types of buildings they're putting in are going to be a lot more suitable for that area, in my opinion.
Yeah.
And so having those warehouse slash retail fronts, or is, there's a market for it, especially right now, especially with all of our in-home businesses. Someone wants to rent a space to store their excess stuff. They have woodworkers or computer repairmen. That'd be a great place for them to work out of. I think it'll be really beneficial overall.
Good. Are there any other questions? Do you have any questions? I, I take it you're, you're the developers that are here? Are there any statements that you wanna make? Or, okay. I like quiet.
Actually, I do have one question. You guys said you were gonna sell the commercial part after the fact, right? Because you're residential developers, not commercial developers. You're kinda stub it in and let someone else who knows better.
That's correct. Garrett Seeley.
Okay.
Representing, may I speak, mayor? Sorry.
No, I wanted to make sure you, I wanted to make sure you stated.
I questioned him, so. All right. Yeah, no, Garrett Seeley representing the developer. So we've had some internal discussions, and just like you said, that market's like on fire right now, and so we are exploring the feasibility of us doing the entire thing.
Oh, okay.
So, at, at first glance, we were gonna sell it.
Okay.
We kind of come back and just, yeah. So that's where the answer is.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Anything else? I see you ready to jump here.
Yes, I am. As Jeff stated, the planning commission was very slow in acting to this. As a first call for a motion, there was none. But after further discussion, they finally did approve it. There was some concern, there's a couple of concerns, if you can go back to the zoning map, please, the, the new proposed one.
Yeah.
Where that blue PF comes down to SR six. There's a little concern about.
It's the RC part.
Okay, the RC part?
Yeah. PF is public facilities.
And it's not on there, it's not there under there.
It's the RC.
Right where you got that little hand where it comes to SR six. There's some, some concerns about aesthetics or visibility or whatever you wanna call it, as far as people coming in from town, by having high density or any kind of housing there. It was hoped that, you know, something else could happen that, that would present a different picture of Santaquin as you approach from the west, as traffic will be doing.
Mr. Seeley, do you have a comment on that?
We do. When we were working with staff, that was brought up numerous times, and the way that it oriented to have a building tucked down in that corner, that's where the utilities are gonna go, especially the sewer line, and so we needed to have an open space for it to go through, and it's gonna run along the, the hill of the SR six, all the way down to the tracks. And so the reason why we left that open is gonna be for parking and kind of an open space, if you will.
So it wouldn't be a building there?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
The only thing, it's proposed, and it may be the next action that we take, not this one, but there's a, and you've heard this already before, there's a C store proposed as a possibility. Lots of concern about accessibility for RVs and trailers and semis and stuff getting in and out of that with, with the, and, and access to SR six getting in and out, with it being a state highway and, and, but the congestion around that proposed C store as far as anything of any kind of length, or even a, a crew cab with a big fifth wheel behind it, being able to negotiate the turns and get in and out of the, out of the store, because I don't wanna mention brand names, but if the right store was there, they could draw a lot of traffic eastbound and westbound.
Understandable. And we went through, our land planner actually put together a schematic that showed the turn radiuses and different things to make sure that a fifth wheel or anything with a fifty-foot trailer could accommodate in that section. So we made sure that we did, we take those comments and then.
That image wasn't available. I don't know if it was available to planning commission, but they didn't, it wasn't ever pulled up on the screen for them.
But we heard what you said, and we implemented it. How's that?
And the ins and outs are only on.
Appreciate you acknowledging that. Otherwise, it, it wouldn't be good for the city or for the developer for it to be a failure.
Understandable.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Councilmember Montoya, you good? Then I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance zero nine zero one, two thousand twenty-two, Erkenbrack property rezoned. Do I need to read that whole thing?
No.
That's my motion then.
Unless you want to.
No.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Good. Pass. Good, passes. We have a resolution that goes along with that that has to do with the development agreement. And that is the agreement that they enter into with the city. There's been looked over as to how this can transpire. Do you want to go through that?
So mayor and council, this is the the follow-up development agreement. The the rezone passing then facilitates this development agreement. It has gone through the entire process according to state code and now comes before you, has been reviewed. Uh, by council and staff and and the council, the legal council for the developer and the developer. And and this is what's been brought before you. Again, it is a a would follow up the rezone and would allow them to then build. The, and let me go to the, or let me rephrase, they could apply to facilitate this development plan that they have in here. As exhibit D, uh, that that is part of this plan. I apologize, it's a few pages, so let me get there. But this is the, this is the current concept plan that they have that would be attached with the development agreement. That basically says, here's about what they can build. Again, I I would emphasize that they still have to meet city codes. As far as parking and access and waterline looping and perimeter fencing that we've talked about earlier with with Mr. Rowley. As far as the perimeter fencing for the multifamily, et cetera. Um, but that's that's what's before you and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on that. I won't go into all the details with the development agreement. It's actually fairly, uh, simple as far as the wording is concerned. It's really kind of getting this now to to get to work with the zoning. That's now been approved as far as their site plan.
Are there any questions on the agreement?
Uh, just to comment, parking was an issue that the Planning Commission also brought up very. It was very important to them to make sure that there was adequate parking.
Yes, again, they they have to meet all of our parking standards for both the the CLM zone as well as the as well as the multifamily. Now, nothing's been approved, but they could bring something to the Planning Commission in the future to to get a shared use agreement. Where we have even across the street here, where we have, you know, businesses during the day and residential parking at night. Those types of things are things that can be worked out, but yes, they will still have to meet all of the parking requirements. They will have to meet the the building requirements as far as the size of the garages, et cetera, materials. You know, making making sure that they're meeting our material standards, et cetera, and they're and they're well aware of that. And and the development agreement actually contemplates that. The amendment doesn't, I don't think, change any of that. Essentially, it's basically, uh, a- a- again, just getting them to be able to to do something a little bit different and to go along with the zoning.
Did you, did you look through?
That's the new one?
Oh, yes.
That's what we're starting.
Yes, you did. I've been through it and I don't see problems with it. I've talked with the staff about it and gone through a number of different areas. It's acceptable to me.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Uh, just one comment. I know they have to abide by city code and they're going to do what they and, you know, they're going to do what they can to make the most money. I respect that. You should. Um, but you've got a hundred and sixty-five units that are planned. Most likely, it's a town, their townhomes are going to be young families. So you're looking at, you know, three, three hundred and fifty children under ten. You've got some green space there. I just implore you that as you're working through it, get some good functional parks for three hundred kids. So that they don't have to get in their car and drive two miles north to do something fun.
Yes, and again, open space and amenities are something along with fencing and parking, et cetera. Yes.
I just see so many plans of, oh, we have five acres of green space, but it's, you know, a tenth of acre here and it's just all spread out. It's make it fu- more functional, as functional as you can and and still make the most money you can.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for the approval of this.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number oh nine dash oh one dash two thousand twenty-two with changes zoning. For approximately six point seven eight acres at approximately five hundred eighty West Main Street.
Uh, oh nine oh six.
Did I, what, oh?
This is a resolution.
I, oh, I was one up, one page up. I apologize. Motion to adopt resolution oh nine oh six, two thousand twenty-two. With which approves amendment number one to the Erkenbrack master development agreement.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and a second by Councilman Adcock. So we'll vote by roll. Uh, Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Good. Set to work. Uh, ordinances and Jason, are you going to jump in on these ordinances? Thank you, Mr. Seeley.
Uh, which which ordinances do you want me to jump in on?
Uh, this is going to be the moderate income housing general plan update. This will be.
Okay.
The one and only that we'll vote on, but it has three, four particles.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to introduce it. So, uh, as we talked about in the the council work meeting, uh, during the last meeting. Uh, this is a a state requirement that the the state has asked, uh, cities to to follow. Uh, really, it's basically updating our moderate income housing plans to 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 not just pick specific strategies. As the way they worded them, but to have an implementation plan that goes along with that. So that there's there's a stronger emphasis on on implementing, uh, strategies for moderate income housing. So taking the the strategies that the state has provided to the city, uh, the the council's given their direction. And and planning commission reviewed it and and gave their recommendation. Um, and and we've we've got, uh, four, uh, strategies. With corresponding, uh, implementation plans, uh, before you tonight. Um, and, uh, I I guess it should be say, said a a couple of things. One, the the city is, because of the certain characteristics that we have and not having a transit station. We're required to have three, uh, of those strategies and corresponding implementation plans. Um, before you tonight, there are four. Uh, the reason for that is is because there were four that the council felt like were were worth considering. But, um, the state has indicated in the future, and this this may be a very slim chance, but nonetheless, it is a chance. That if the city is seeking funding from the state and, uh, they're in competition with maybe another city that has has a, you know. A similar, um, a a good case to to make for getting that funding. This could be something that they would turn to as a as a tiebreaker, if you will, or or something to to help differentiate. Which which city is more qualified for getting certain funding. So, uh, I believe that it's anticipated that we will, uh, implement three of those strategies. Just because we have four doesn't mean we have to implement for all four of them. But, uh, um, I think the expectation is that we do three, but having four shows that the the city is open-minded. And doing what we can to to support moderate income housing. So, uh, with that, uh, we have these four before you tonight and we're looking for, uh, your consideration on on whether to have the four. Or or if you have three, which which, uh, one would you like to take out of that? And then just the last thing I'll say is is we are are needing this to to be addressed tonight. Uh, the the state did put an October first deadline on when cities need to have their their moderate income housing plans updated. With this information that I provided you in in this this introduction. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Uh, I know Brett is is and and Norm are available as well and and, uh, we look for for your, um, consideration on this this ordinance.
I know that you've, uh, put a lot of work into this and, uh, I think it's good and wise planning. Especially with what we're trying to do with transportation and and, uh, helping alleviate some of our issues around town. Uh, it's a good move. You put good thought into it. So with that, are there any questions that we have from the council?
Yeah, Jason, there's a five-year rollout on this. What happens in five years? Do we have to come up with three or four more? Or do we not know what the state's going to anticipate?
Well, so I wouldn't say that there's a five-year rollout on this plan. I I think one of the specific strategies we had. Uh, was could could be a five-year rollout with that specific strategy. Uh, I think the the moderate income housing plan is intended to think five years out, but this may be an update. Uh, with with recent state legislation, uh, it seems like they want moderate income housing to be addressed or at least discussed every every year. So we'll see what what comes next year and and, uh, you know, moderate income housings are all, uh, um, moderate income housing requirements are always being discussed and looked at. So this this is something that that, uh, you know, a couple of the strategies, uh, address it on more of an annual basis. That that one, uh, related to, uh, impact fees. Kind of naturally is is going to be addressed in more of a five-year timeline. Because the way we worded that is as we update each of our master plans, uh, there's a what's called an impact fee. Uh, assessment or analysis, which is accompanied by the impact fee facilities plan. And those those studies and those plans are what justify the the impact fees that we charge for each development. So as we update those master plans, we will, we will do an analysis of those impact fees. And see if if, uh, specifically detached accessory dwelling units. Uh, are justified in having their impact fees, uh, reduced or waived. So, um, as each master plan is updated, which they they are generally updated, uh, every five years, we will look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, and it, they may have other things that roll in too and it's legislature. That's their job to make ours miserable sometimes.
Yeah, it just concerns me to have unfunded mandates.
Yeah.
Yep.
So Jason, correct me, this this, uh, moderate income housing is something that is updated annually. Is that correct?
Uh.
Or at least it has been annually in the last couple of years.
Right, because of of state legislative changes of of wanting to see it updated and and have a little bit more detail in it. So, uh, we've we've done it the past couple of years and like I say, I see that this is going to be something that the state would like cities to look at. On an annual basis. We at least need to do a report annually is maybe the what I should say. In terms of actually updating the plan, it it may be a couple of years now, but we are going to need to do an annual report. Of, uh, of how these strategies are are going, uh, and in being implemented.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Then let's move on. I'd entertain a motion that we, uh, approve, um, this ordinance.
Has the decision of whether it's three or four been made, determined? Is that part of the motion or what?
I think as written, there are four. So if you.
Okay, as written.
If you make a motion, then it's with the four.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance zero nine zero two, two thousand twenty-two, moderate income housing general plan update as it's written, including the four. Strategies and implementation plans.
Okay. Uh, motion made by Councilman Adcock. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Sitaway. Roll call vote. Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Good and passed. Okay, reports. Uh, Jason Bond, do you have a report that you would like to make tonight?
Um, not, not a whole lot. Uh, a- a- as you probably are aware, we've we've canceled, uh, some planning commissions in the past. There's a little bit of a slowdown with with some development proposals, but we do have some development proposals that will be, uh, coming next week. Uh, at at DRC and and Planning Commission, so, um, uh, yeah, just just. Just an understanding that that there has been a bit of a slowdown, but, uh, things are, there's still a lot of things that are happening. Uh, in the background with with, uh, ideas that are being, um, um, explored. And 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 developers who are 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 trying to to work through their proposals. Um, as you, as you're aware, I'm 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 out of town right now. I appreciate the council's support and and allowing me to get some some training. Uh, this has been a great conference and and a lot of, uh, opportunity to to really, uh, network and and talk with. With other city managers and learn from them. So I'm excited about, uh, taking this knowledge and 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 helping it in my career. So thank you for your support there. Uh, other than that, I'm looking forward to getting getting back and and and, uh, getting some some, uh, some things. Um, uh, get working on some things again and and would I be happy to answer any questions that you have for me right now?
Jason, we're planning to have a meeting next week.
Uh, I believe so. Like I say, there's some pending applications that that I'll be, uh, working, uh, communicating with my staff on. To to make sure that that everything's taken care of, but we did, uh, last week have some some things come through. And so we're anticipating that those are going to move forward. Uh, for sure, DRC, uh, Planning Commission is is something that I expect. Will will be some applications that will be ready to move forward as well.
Okay, on a personal note, since you're out of town, you don't know that my Mylar has been turned in and requires planning commission for signature.
We can do that offline. We, you don't have to take it to planning commission. We can have the planning commissioner, uh, chair take care of that offline.
Okay.
That's correct. Yep. So all the action in in public meetings has been taken care of with that particular development proposal. And and any any work that that, uh, related to the Mylar we can take care of, uh, just in the office.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
So council members and mayor, just a couple of things coming up. Uh, you'll probably see some some paving equipment coming into town. Um, a couple of areas around the church and Summit Ridge, there's going to be some pretty heavy roadway, uh, reconstruct there. With the roadway mostly consisting of crack seal. Right now, we're going to take up all the asphalt and redo it around the church and some of those roads. Um, you'll likely be seeing that next week and you should be seeing, if you live in that area, uh, we'll be sending out an Everbridge as well as, uh, door hangers. We'll be going out by the contractor to make sure that people are aware of that. There will likely be some disruption to most every driveway and street, et cetera. In that area, just around the church and Summit Ridge, not the parkway itself, but the the local roads back behind it. There's also a couple of roads on the east bench and on the north end of town that will be affected as well. Again, the the contractor is required to put out notifications for that. So if you see that, we just ask you to give them a a break and and let them get that work done. They'll get in and get it get it done in a in a couple of weeks and.
Is it only around the church or any of the side streets?
It's many of the the roads around the church, I believe, including, I I believe, including where you live. And so, yeah, just just making sure that that everybody's aware of that.
Not needed.
Um, I I I'm not sure all the specifics, but there are, most of the the roads in there are going to have some treatment on it just because of how bad they are.
Yeah.
Uh, we now own the parcel south of Big O for corridor preservation. We closed on that last week and that's a fantastic thing for us. Uh, to to be able to to have that and have that available for when the the interchange can get reconstructed. Uh, we, I I would thank UDOT and MAG. We had some, uh, last minute marathoning that we needed to do there to to get a UDOT agreement in place. In fact, that was the one that that you guys, uh, talked about a couple of weeks ago and approved a couple of weeks ago. That was still being worked on with UDOT and legal in the background after you already approved it. So no, no intent has changed, just to, and just basically, we we had to to work with them to get that taken care of on their side of things. Uh, the next parcel that we're going to pursue is a proportion of the Maverick parcel. The mayor and I have talked about that. We're going to start moving forward on that as best we can. Um, Harvest View Ribbon Cutting will be October eighteenth at four thirty PM. I think all of you should have received an invite on that. Um, that may or may not affect our five thirty meeting that night. If we have a work session, we may start a little bit later. We may not have one. That'll be up to the mayor as we get closer to that, depending on what's what's, uh, potential agenda items are on that. Um. And I think that that's all I have and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have if you have them.
Okay.
On that ribbon cutting, I've invited Patient Chronicle and they've accepted the invitation to be there.
Perfect. That'll be good advertising.
Yeah.
What's the date of that?
Uh, is October eighteenth at four thirty PM. It's a Tuesday right before our council meeting. Meetings, sorry.
Okay. No other staff. Uh, Councilman Meacham, do you have a report?
Uh, I don't have anything tonight, mayor, just enjoying some R and R, so I appreciate the time and, uh, it was good to be able to zoom in.
I don't want to even ask. Thanks for zooming in.
We would be jealous.
I want to ask, where is he?
We'll just go.
It rhymes with, it rhymes with Disney World.
Ocean.
The Bahamas.
Okay, uh, Councilman Sitaway?
Um, I don't have much. I just want to thank the three of you for judging the chili cook-off yesterday. My sons won, so.
Really?
They were number two.
Was it?
Yep.
Oh, good.
They got first place, so they appreciate that. They got a shot shooter reward shaped like Utah and so Santaquin on it with all the little knives and stuff that go with it, some gift certificates, a shirt. They got, uh, shot shoot reward shaped like Utah and so Santaquin on it with all the little knives and stuff to go with it, some gift certificates, a shirt.
Fun.
Worth the effort.
It was a fifty dollar gift certificate to Total Fitness and Pace and my fourteen year old was very happy about that.
Terrific.
Good.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Thanks, Jeff.
It's been mentioned already, but just for everyone's reminder, the Emergency Preparedness Fair. Um, Saturday from nine to twelve, five forty-five north on two hundred east. I encourage you to be there and, and learn what. About what you're interested in. Um, I was approached by a fireman in Genoa City today. They're going to, part of their city celebration, they're gonna have a flag retirement program. And they've, uh, invited, uh, our Santaquin American Legion post to, um, be part of that flag retiring, retirement party. That'll be on October the tenth at six PM.
Okay, good. Anything else?
No, sir.
Councilmember Montoya.
Um, so I know this is backing up a little bit because I was gone the week after Orchard Days, but, um, I wanna thank all of the. Staff and volunteers who made our city celebration a success and report that the members of the youth council. Um. Dedicated well over a hundred hours of service just in that week. So, I'm very proud of them and, um, some of those events would not be as successful without our, our. Youth City Council kids. So I appreciate them a lot. And Hattie, um, Robbery, the staff mentor for youth council. And we are gonna have a very busy October. They have a service opportunity about every week in October. So that's gonna be really fun with those, um, events. And I was able to help judge and give feedback in the Miss Santaquin practice interviews. Last week, um, a group of lovely young women, so I'm excited to see the competition.
Nancy, what time is that on the first?
Um, mayor has tickets. It should be either six or seven. I think I put it in my calendar too, but.
Oh, it's a Saturday.
Um, seven PM, Pace and High School.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, yeah, lovely young women and it was really fun to, um, to ask them some really tough questions. About their platforms and about current events and to give them feedback on their responses. And their posture and their, um, overall presentation. That was really good. So. Um, so I wanna thank, um, Miss Santaquin, Molly Mortensen and her attendance for their service. As well as the Miss Santaquin Committee. They put in a lot of time behind the scenes that, um, nobody's aware of. And it, they always pull it off very smoothly each year and, um, sacrifice a lot of time away from their families. And just as a heads up, I will not be at city council meeting on October eighteenth. I will be at the ribbon cutting for the pickleball courts. But then I will skedaddle and have another thing that I will be attending, so.
Definition on skedaddle.
Giddy up.
Get on your horse and leave.
Giddy up and hit the road, Jack.
Okay.
So, just a heads up on that.
Okay. Well, uh, I wanna give a couple of things. We've had some tremendous meetings with, uh. State senators, uh, I've been on the phone tonight with, uh, Burgess Owens's o- office about opening up. The, the canyon. Um, we have had new senators that have stepped up with the senate president. On, uh, what they termed a. I don't wanna say a fatal, what is it?
Critical.
Critical failure on our inter- interchange. And nine months ago. I was told personally, um, don't look for anything for thirty years. And we've had some Band-Aids thrown at us to be able to look at what we can do to handle the traffic. And I think when the senator coined it critical failure, he understood it. And we're taking people on tours, we're setting things up. We have a meeting planned for the middle of next month. The thirteenth and fourteenth, where all of the commissions of UDOT will be in this building. And we will be given time to explain our needs. And that's the good part of the whole city and, uh, we're well on our way. We're, we're making some things happen.
Yeah, and that's a good point for the public to make sure they understand as well. The morning of the fourteenth, October fourteenth is available. As a public forum for the UDOT commission meeting, so they can come in and share their concerns just like they do in here for city council meeting. They can share the. Concerns about traffic and congestion and transportation projects that UDOT has in our region. That come in and, and make your voice be heard. That's something that's very, very important.
Pro- probably might be good for them to drag main that day too. Really show, you know, just like the old time. Uh, they, they have personally witnessed what our needs are. We have gone through some really good, uh. Uh, meetings as we prepared for this, but also as we've been working very diligently. Trying to get funds put together, buying property for corridor preservation and, uh, we have made some very good moves. And, uh, that, that is a commendation for this council, for the staff. And the way the vision is being treated. I, I think as a whole, MAG is behind us. UDOT is slowly getting behind us. They're not there all the way, but they're getting closer. And, uh, we're making headway. Um. The, the one thing that you didn't respond on was the state of the PI pond, uh, tank up in Summit Ridge. Uh, any, any idea on the closure? Because we still had some, uh, pipe that we needed in the ground. Do you know where we're at on that?
Yeah, so they'll, they'll have most everything as far as the, the tank is operational and has been for several months, which has been really good for our summertime use. Uh, the pipeline is still being installed down by the reservoir. There's, the road is still closed down there and will be another couple of weeks probably getting that and underneath the free, underneath the railroad. Not the freeway, the railroad. Um, and so I would imagine in the next forty-five days, sixty days, they'll be buttoning up. Things for the winter. They still will be working on the booster pump station that's up on the hill. And, uh, that will actually start up next year as far as the, the booster pump station because it will not be constructed due to. Electrical and motors and pumps and other things that are long lead term items. Uh, they, they won't be here until, some of them probably until the middle of the winter. So they'll still be installing all of that stuff. We just won't be able to start it up and. Pressure test it and start it up until the PI is turned on in the, in the, in the, uh, springtime.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, the, the paving that will be on five hundred south, we do have to pay five hundred south back for the county permit that we got. That will be done before the end of the season, which is October fifteenth plus or minus depending on weather. So in the next thirty to forty-five days, that should be done and then they'll just be working in the dirt and over on our, uh, park property there by the Summit Ridge well.
Yeah.
They're backfilling the tank now and they'll be done with that probably in the next few weeks, but the, the pipeline is, is continuing to be installed. It's not hooked up yet, but it will get there. This year and then the booster pump will be the last thing to come online next year.
We have, uh, a lot of things that are moving forward. Um, there will be, uh, uh. The October mayor's message we'll discuss in some detail where. The businesses that are trying to get gig speed to our city have laid out plans. And we've really only gotten one response and all of that information will be in every household. As well as maps and directions to get to it, kind of some expectations, some could be high and low. The core part of town is in very good shape and there are other parts to that and, uh, we are moving forward with the, uh. Micro trenching and, uh, looks like we're, we'll be underway as soon as they can get things lined up. So, I say we, it's for the benefit of the city to be able to get fiber speeds. So. The last thing is, uh, making good headway on the, uh, bike park. There's trails being mapped and planned. Uh, the bridge is waiting for a couple of final approvals. We're staging everything, getting ready to polish that off. The toilets will be here in a couple of weeks. So, I think right around the first of October and, uh, I just haven't heard anything back from them. John, I think is in contact with them. But it's not like he calls every day. Uh, things are moving really good. Some kind soul in the city planted, uh, about. Six or eight chickens up on the park property. They stayed around for a few days and then I think the local residents. Uh, pretty much had new meals, but, uh, you know, why somebody would take their chickens up, I don't know, but. They stayed around for a little while. Uh, the park, I, I have a, a company. That I've been meeting with that is sponsoring a lot of the things to help us develop that even down to. Professionals for layout and, uh, we're making good headway. This is going to be a destination. And more than anything, there are locals that are riding things. There's stuff where they just go up. Some guy went, or a lady went up with a weed whacker the other day. So, I want you to know, people love this. And, uh, to drive up and to see that big parking lot is, is a boon for us. You know, we've only been nine months into the presentation of a park to realization. And, uh, it is a badge to all of us that, uh, wanna see these kind of things happen. The city has some tremendous planning going on. There's some good people that are looking out for us. There are new things. On the horizon that, uh, we are working on. That are just amazing to what they will bring to this city if they come to be. In the meantime, uh, I continue to meet with, uh, businesses and we've had an economic. Um, it's not a development board, but it's an economic summit with some chosen business leaders. That have met a couple of times and discussed what the needs are for this city. And now we're gonna take that input and put it to use and we'll have a big report. We're going to have a, uh. Open house for a council meeting in November that everybody's cringing about and. We just get a chance to talk to everybody that wants to come in and, uh, I thank the staff. I thank every one of you for everything that you do. This council is amazing to work with and, uh, I love this city. It's better than Bear Lake. Did you know that? You'll find that out one day. Uh, any other things that need to be brought up? Uh, I'll pass these over, take two for you, for you and your spouse and then, uh, we'll get the other two put into the boxes downstairs. For the councilman. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's late there. If he really is in Florida, it's ten thirty there.
That's okay. Thank you.
Good night, Lynn.